The other sixteen, some of just the pinch in county, some most of them are in county. But that makes it quite, uh, much unique, I guess, but interesting and kind of hard to, understand what you're talking about and what you're reading. We discovered that Patterson Valley was in all these charts and graphs. Well, Patterson Valley is a valley that's down near Peoach. How in the world I'd ever got in into those charts and graphs, I'll never know. But we solved that problem. For those that might be familiar with Cave Valley, as you go from Cave Valley into Lake Valley, you go over Patterson Pass. And whether that was part of the reason, I don't know, but anyway. This becomes part of the White Line County master plan, and so that's the reason that our board has approved it. And when this board approves it, then it goes to the county commission, and they get to look at it. And once they approve it, then it will be published. If you've got questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Well, I, I'm, I mean, this is not my pay grade, but I think, I just was wondering about the Basset. There was some verbiage in there, but was it older? Was that verbiage in the, with the Basset Lake older? Says it was working with Kennicott to developing, um, you know, kind of like a park area. I guess there was some discussion at some point in time about Kennicott and, um, or Kennicott selling some of that land back to the county with, with water rights kind of thing?
I don't know who sponsored that thought.
Okay. I thought I read it in here, that's why I asked.
It mentions that that was, that was.
So what, what grabbed my interest is that, I just was wondering, is that most recent? Is this older? How, I mean, how, how up to date is this?
I, I could find no one that had any information concerning that. So it was old enough of a, of a concept that, uh, I, I think it's a project that somebody might take a hold of and work with if they kind of thought, uh, willing to do that.
And the main reason I brought it up is, and I had no idea about this, but the amount of, uh, the water hole, I think is what the terminology was, and this is above me, but it, it was interesting to see the water hole for Basset Lake was far superior than both Cummings and Cave Lake. Threw me off guard, I wouldn't have ever have thought that. But for me, from, from, from what, the way I read that, and I could be reading this completely wrong, but that to me is an extremely valuable source of, uh, water, um, or water hole, I think, for White Line County. And so that's why I was just curious, you know, I, 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 you know, I don't know, how old this is? And I'm just trying to figure out even what, what the whole thing is.
I'm like that major, but Basset Lake, there's a lot of irrigation that, that happens with that water. But when you get to Basset Lake, it depends on the year, I guess, how big that becomes or how small it becomes. On that point, uh, two thousand six, did he mention Cummins Lake in the list of lakes? And Endow says it's the largest lake as far as surface.
Surface water.
Surface area, yeah.
Yeah.
But as far as water capability.
Water hole, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, water capability, that was right.
Yeah. Um, George, did you have something to add?
Yeah.
I did, if you have, uh, once the gentleman is through.
Well, I think this could be a good roundtable, I'm up for, go ahead.
In regards to your question regarding, uh, Basset Lake, that lake was formed as a backup for mill on the Kennicott property. If the Duck Creek line went down, they needed a source that wouldn't hamper the, uh, the operation. Sometime late eighties, possibly nineties, there was an agreement with Kennicott and Nevada Department of Wildlife, or Fish and Game.
It was Fish and Game.
Okay. I wanted to, former Judge Lopez was involved in that to some extent.
Correct.
And you may get, uh, an update on that. I can't remember if Kennicott gifted it, or they have some kind of working agreement as a recreation area, meaning fishing, boating, that kind of thing.
I think that you're, George, I think you're right, about nineteen, it was, might have been a little bit farther than that, closer to two thousand is when it was really, um, Judge Lopez had looked into possibly acquiring not only the water, but some of the land from Kennicott to make that into a larger recreation center to coincide with Cummins Lake and to bring more recreation, fishing, all that stuff into it, because he saw that, um, the water potential was higher there than it was even at Cummins Lake. And, um, I am not sure exactly how that went down, where it kind of fizzled out a little, but I think there was, there was, like, a lot of times, a lot of, um, too many, too many people in the, in the kitchen. And so I think a lot of that went away and it became, I think it was more of a cost feasibility issue for the Department of Wildlife or Endow to, to look at, yeah, take on that responsibility. And so it kind of went away. But I, I, um, I'm glad it's still on there because I would love, I would love to see that project rekindled again at some point in, you know, in my lifetime or somebody else's lifetime. But definitely the water resources are there to make that just as good as a recreation or better than what Cummins or Cave Lake is. The potential for, for freshwater fish there and everything else is great, there's, there's so much more water there.
I believe the agreement is there, the finances are enough.
That's probably what it is, yes.
And that, that was definitely in the way, in the middle of the times, because that's when I was counting.
Yeah.
So the other, the other thing that, um, I think, I don't know, is interesting, it's not in this plan, is the, is, was the discussion of the dams. I didn't, I didn't see anything in there about fixing those dams, that kind of thing. I, I do think, I mean, we talk about this thing does a fantastic job. By the way, thank you for putting all of this together, it was a lot of work, it was a really great job. But there was discussion about the, the dams and what's needed to be repaired and all that stuff. And I had also heard that that was the same thing over at Basset Lake as well. And, and, and I don't know exactly how true all this is, or if I'm just listening, but I think for, for the financial impact for, um, for the, this water, um, resource plan book, I think that's something that needs to be, I guess, factored in maybe, or I don't know, am I, am I taking outside the box there? Because if, I, I, it sounds like the Cave Lake thing is easily a two-year plan or something like that. And it's made, I, I do believe it's made a, an impact, an economic impact, so is the same thing there, you know, I just.
As a matter of catchment goes, which is critical to counterbalance the problems outlined here, is the problems with evaporation of the, the resource. I mean, there's a, I mean, here, uh, that's a high number of, uh, evaporation. So the, the greater we can increase the, the ability of catchment for, for water resources, the better. And if we could turn them into recreational areas like Basset and so forth, that would lead to maybe improving the roads to get to it. Because I know going across the flats from over at Bagill gets a little bit dicey sometimes, if the, you know, if the, if the bottom line's a little bit, a little wet. But, uh, but yeah, I, I can see that focusing on that would be, be just as critical.
Is there, you're mentioning the dams, and I know that DOT was involved in the expansion of Cummins. Is that still something that's feasible, or is that to expand the dam there so it would raise the water level? Because DOT apparently didn't want to spend the money to redo the highway for fifty there.
But Endow has a, a plan, but the money never materialized to do that. They wanted to raise that dam, it would require rebuilding a highway there to let that happen. Apparently that highway doesn't hold water, or that dam, the stair doesn't hold water good, it seeps through. But what they had planned is not even in the talking stages at this point, as far as I know.
Yeah, I think it came to a cost issue, as always, on their, could we just tell more affiliate with Las Vegas? Which spent some money, didn't it, there? Well, I know that there was a lot of feasibility study done, there was evaporation rate studies done, because you're trying to balance the influx of water to the evaporation rate and trying to keep that at, at, uh, an equal level.
Flatline was as much possible, yeah.
Because if you, if you increase the surface area of the, the lake by raising the dam, and your water coming in is not producing as much as what it's evaporating, then you might as well not do it. So I think that there was a lot of studies done, how far, now, if I remember right, it was around seven feet is what they had said that they would raise it and still meet that optimal amount of having fresh water coming into there and equalling or more than what the evaporation rate was for the crease surface area. But again, I think it came down to, um, the cost. Yeah, but, I mean, I, I kind of see where Andy's going with it. I would love to see us plan for those kind of things, for more resources of water around our area. And, you know, my hat's off to you, I'm not sure how, if you were involved, or how much you were involved with the Southern Nevada water issue with all of this, but I'm sure you were, but thank you. But I would love for us to, you know, we're keeping our water here, I'd love to see us use those resources to our benefit and, uh, and for recreation here.
In our, uh, meeting last night, we meet every third Tuesday, and someone came up with the concept, uh, why don't they use the power or the water coming out of Cave Lake? That's quite a, a drop there to generate electricity. I had never thought about that. What potential there is there, I don't know, but.
Well, there's, there's a lot to that as far as drop in flow rates and everything, and how, how big of a plant you can put in, if it's cost effective enough for all of that cost for the energy that you're putting out. And so I'm, I'm not sure if the amount of cubic feet of water coming out of Cave Lake, or Cave Creek, is enough to power a hydroelectric plant or not, that's, that's well beyond my, my expertise, but.
Might be enough just to handle, uh, you know, handle serving just the, you know, just the park area itself.
Yeah, it, well, it could be, but then you, anyways, there's a lot to that, there's, there's a lot of drop, you have to have so much feet of drop and cubic feet per second to make these turbines go. And then you have, would have to bring the power back up to Cave Lake again. So there's a lot to that, that maybe we, you know, we can't answer all those questions. But getting back to the point at hand, I mean, yeah, I think Andy's, I would love to see us revisit some of those things, you know, and look at possibly these dams, uh, of re, rebuilding them to make more recreation around here and bring more people in. I mean, I was, I just got done with a road trip on a motorcycle over in Utah, and it's amazing to me how, you know, the state's coming alive and everywhere you go, there's, there's reservoirs that have been made over there. And understandably, they have more water than we do. But, um, you know, people were using those reservoirs quite extensively for recreational usage and still social distancing, um, out in the middle of the great outdoors. But, um, but people are, are flocking to those areas to get away from other people. And, and so it'd be nice to be able to revisit those options and maybe bring in some more recreation by rebuilding these areas that might need it, raising the one at Cummins Lake, possibly visiting the one out of Basset Lake, that project out there, so. Anyways, I read the rest of it, it, again, thank you for, for all the effort in it. And so, um, I guess, is this a, this is an action, is it a possible action, yeah, so.
Yeah. Let me suggest, if, if the group wants more time to, to read, have, have that opportunity. The DA said, oh, that'd be what was electronic, and I assume each of you have the, the electronic on your email.
Yes.
I, I want to just point out chapter eight in there, if, if you look at that, what that is, is all about, and then this, this wasn't new, this was in the two thousand six, uh, issue, encouraging county to have a natural resource department, which would have a person in that position dealing with all of the natural resources. And I don't know how many of you were, but I think it's worth, uh, me explaining. Right now, there is a movement on in the county to join the county wa, water advisory board with Pluac and make that one committee, and it would be a, uh, a person hired to be in charge of all that, uh, natural resources. Water is just one part of our natural resources that we have. And once the mining's gone, uh, we're going to be relying on them more than we are now, I'm sure. Anyway, uh, if, if you want more time, at this point in time, we've spent enough time on NESP, that walk there might be, if you're ready to prove it, fine.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you as well, it's very informative. The only question I had was how are you going to plan all this or get the funding? I see there's mention it's, um, White Line County Department of Taxation, but are there other sources that is going to help to fund, um, this project?
Right now, uh, because of what took place with the Sunwalk, state engineer canceling all of their water permits in four basins, the county had been budgeting over a hundred thousand dollars for lawyers. This year, they cut that down to fifty thousand dollars. And some of that other fifty thousand dollars, they have made a contract with, uh, and I can't tell you with who, the, they're going to be acting as this na, natural resource advisor for the county. And he was on the phone with us last night in our meeting, and he'll either attend all of our meetings or be on the phone with us. And he'll report directly to the county commission. So that's a start on going where we thought we should go. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think that's great to move resources, you know, to some, something like this. So, um, I'm sure it's a work in progress, this is just the beginning, but, um, it's very informative.
But the items that Jason and you mentioned about dams, would that fit into basically your Water Resource Action Plan in chapter eight?
Yeah, chapter eight was kind of an outline.
Would, would, would that, would, what they were talking about fit into that process?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Um, the well protection heads or wellhead protection areas or, like, it sounded like the county had worked to get a few of those done. But they, but it also had said in there that they were going to come up with a, um, generalized plan or a generalized idea of doing them and completing them all for all of them. That includes Baker and it sounded like maybe Cherry Creek needed to have a well protection head, um, area or whatever. That's, um, is that, is that still in fruition? Is that still something that they're talking about?
Well, the way the manual is set up, it, it looked at what the potential might be in certain basins. Is that what you're?
Uh, they, it sounded like, well, they call them like wellhead protection areas for public water, it sounded like.
Well, uh, there's one, one chapter in there, chapter seven, is about monitoring. And that's, that's a way to protect the water resource. Is keep track of what's happening. The, the groundwater, surface water is a different issue. But the groundwater, uh, if, if it's plain to see, in Steptoe Valley especially, is way over appropriated. If the twenty-five thousand acre feet of water that was permitted for power plants and the mine was going, was using all of their permits, you would see groundwater just tables going down, 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 down. So that's why monitoring is so important. And when a figure in, in the book went into a lot of this, when it determined what the perennial yield is in a basin, you have to understand that the way that perennial yield is, is harmless is critical. If you go to one, one spot and take that much water out, that spot table will, that large table will drop. This is the same. The state water engineer is looking at basins, and White River Valley has been, uh, put in that category where there is no more water available, groundwater. Eureka is way past how much water should have been appropriated. Lake Valley is, is another valley that very little of that's in White Line County, but that's another basin the state engineers have focused. With monitoring is, is being done. Our, our book outlines the methodology of how we go about it. But thank goodness, between Central Nevada Water Authority and USGS and the state water engineer, every basin is being monitored. There's, I shouldn't be able to tell you the figure, but in Steptoe Valley, there are probably thirty wells that's monitored on at least an annual basis. Because the basin is over appropriated, but because so much of that appropriation does not be used, the state's just, just sitting.
Yeah, on that. I'm, I'm going to approve the twenty nineteen update of the two thousand six water resource plan book.
We're voting to approve in a, in a second. I'm going to vote to a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, for all your hard work on that. For all the work they put into this.
I do know it's the regional planning commissioners, they mentioned this a lot, so we're gonna have to.
Yes.
And, and we'll move on to item C. Statement for possible action approval to set future meetings of the regional planning commissions for the purpose of revamping zoning and other regulations that are outdated. Any input on that?
Thank you. Um, Tony Pyle and I were discussing this, and we, we like the idea of working to revamp the zoning, but we think it might be beneficial if there's certain issues that you, that each of you individually see to come to myself if it's within the city, or to Mr. Pyle if it's within the county. And then we can address it and draft up a red line ordinance to keep the, to start the conversation at the meeting, instead of having a meeting where, um, we have maps all over place and are discussing and throwing everything together. And, um, I know I don't know any of you very well, and with the pandemic, everyone was hidden away. So you, you can always contact me or Brian, uh, Mr. Pyle, about any issues you see, or like, I know one of the issues was the horse zoning. That's something that wherever, I believe it's in the county or, I can't remember. So come to one of us and we can go through that ordinance together and draft up, to put it on the next agenda. It just, I think adding additional meetings might not be beneficial when our meetings are shorter than, um, than some of the other meetings that Brian and I have to deal with. But I, that also is just kind of what we were thinking, that it might be a better way to hone in on the real issues that you're seeing with the zoning. And that's, that's my two cents, and.
Would it be possible to have Burton? Because this is the issue that came up in the real estate industry, that the assessors' use codes and the zoning are not the same and all of them conflict. Maybe sit down with some of us or Burton, with Burton and Brian, to say, what direction should we go? So that we can clean those issues up a little bit.
Basically, it's a setup, a process to evaluate it. How to evaluate it on a block by block basis.
I don't think sitting down with Burton is the way to go, because the assessor's use codes are used for the assessor's purposes only. They have nothing to do with the zonings whatsoever, as we discussed in the last meeting.
Yeah, that was all.
The person to sit down with would be Brad, I believe, again, working out some.
Well, I thought we talked last time about, I thought there was going to be some possible movement of working towards getting the, getting something on a website that would make it easy so that they both show up on the same website. I thought that was what the whole, point or topic of conversation was.
Well, you got the assessed property would also say, this is assessed, add for use in this manner, but it is zoned this.
Exactly, yeah. I thought that was the topic of discussion, and I think, didn't we, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we discuss that we needed to have some IT person or somebody to.
It's a matter of manpower, yeah.
Yeah, Burton brought that up because what he says is on the county assessors' site doesn't match what Brad, I mean, I made phone calls to Brad and Burton, and I get two different answers, so it's hard for.
Yeah.
I'd like to resolve that part of the issue, so that I know that the use code and the zoning are compatible, maybe?
Right, it's hard to get blended.
And I don't think you'll, I don't think you'll ever see compatibility between those two, honestly.
Right.
Like, I don't, it, there's just.
There's no parity between the two.
Because people will do things, if, if they want to do that, if they want to get horses and cows in, in their. in their thing without asking for it, they're going to get it in there.